Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee. We're going to stand, if you can.
Recording in progress.
We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll follow that with the National Anthem by the City View Chorus, led by Erin Dare and Cindy Capoletti. Is that right? Thank you.
Aye.
(Inaudible) 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 Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars and bright stars do the banner this fly? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the comrade singing air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I just ask everybody to remain standing for a moment of silence. I very... Okay. We'd be remiss if we didn't address the recent tragedy that occurred earlier this week that cost the lives of Chastity and Zellin Nolinas and a mother and daughter. While we request privacy for the sake of the families, we stand alongside the community in solidarity in our thoughts with the family at this time and also with the school district. And so I want to thank the superintendent for everything she's done in this situation. So I ask for a moment of silence for their lives taken well too soon. I'd also like to take a moment of silence for former Deputy Superintendent Thomas Friend, a Worcester Public Schools alumni himself. Tom was a teacher at the former East Kendall Street School, moved up to principal and central administration staff for the Worcester Public Schools, deputy superintendent from '81 to '93. He served as executive director of Central Mass Education Cooperative for 14 years. We appreciate Tom's service and our thoughts with his family following their loss. Thank you. Do a roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Present.
Member Biancaria.
Here.
Member Benenda.
Here.
Member Guardiola.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member Roy.
Here.
Mayor Petty.
Here.
Okay. Okay. So we're going to do the... We'll do the recognitions first, if you want. Not the good Christie. We're going to skip over the consent agenda. We're going to do the consent agenda first. Opposed and favor. Opposed or ordered. And we have recognitions. The first one to recognize, we have Barry Maloney and Lexmy Bisundial. Do I have that? I got it? All right. Perfect. Director of Multicultural Affairs from Worcester State University. We want to thank them for 30 years of holding the Martin Luther King Jr. Youth Breakfast. I think this was presented by... Oh, is it Maureen? Did you want to say a few words? Or you want me to... I'll read this and turn it over to you. From 30 years, Worcester State, to thank them for 30 years of holding the Martin Luther King Jr. Youth Breakfast, which, according to Ms. Bisundial, "Cave geared toward providing an opportunity for youth to showcase their gifts, talent, and honor those without community who exemplified the principles of Dr. King." Member Benenda requested this recognition. We would also like to thank Dorothy Hagrove, co-founder of the event, to speak. You want to say a few words, anybody? Go on up. All three of you come up.
Thirty years ago, my brother Gordon, myself, George Smith Storms, started a... the first Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast because we wanted our youth to know about the commitment and legacy of Dr. King. We felt it was something we couldn't let go. That was 30 years ago. Worcester State University, for 30 years, has hosted this breakfast. They have provided the food, the venue, the awards, and President Maloney has been fabulous. And my dear friend Lexmy has done so much work. They do the printing and everything. And we have the most wonderful poetry contest. And one of the children, after they got the prize, I said, "Oh." And he said, "I stood next to the president of the college." That's what he thought. Well, anyhow. I feel we need to publicly thank Worcester State, President Maloney, and Lexmy Bisundial because they've done this and kept it up for all these years. And our students are the ones who benefit from this every year. So I personally want to thank you both for all you've done for our kids.
Member Benenda.
So Dot mentioned to me about this item. I was happy to put this item on because I personally, for my career years, have always attended that Martin Luther King Breakfast. I like it because of children in the Worcester Public Schools write literacy poems, and they're recognized for writing. And their families are there as well as... It's a Martin Luther King celebration that brings in lots of children and families in the Worcester Public Schools, as well as adults. And everybody feels welcome. There's a great singer there that really inspires you to think about everybody working together. So I do want to thank you also for personally always going there, both of you yourselves, and also for Dot Hagrove, for all the work she has with reading all those essays that those children submit and congratulating the students for their thoughts on living the dream of Martin Luther King. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to come on in, President Maloney and Lexmy? We have a certificate right to give you. Lexmy, thank you for continuing the Martin Luther King Youth Breakfast at Worcester State University for the last 30 years and signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. I'd like to present you this. President Maloney, you too, for continuing the Martin Luther King Youth Breakfast at the Worcester State University for the last 30 years, signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. Okay, one more recognition. We have Christopher Fabe, a 14-year-old freshman at Dougherty, for being selected to the 16th Annual National All-America Youth Football East versus West All-Star Game for the top 60 30- and 14-year-old players in the country. That's pretty cool. And... And Member Johnson, we'll say a few words. You can come on down, Chris, if you'd like, and bring anybody with you if you want.
Thank you to the mayor, to my colleagues, and everyone in attendance. So Christopher has been involved with youth sports since he was a young man. I've known him since he was actually a baby. And I could tell you that he's grown into a fine young man. Christopher is an honor roll student at Dougherty High School, currently now as a freshman. He excels in the classroom, as well as excelling on the football field. And I wanted to recognize you today for your hard work. You know, Christopher was... There was only two kids from Massachusetts that was elected, but he was the only one from Worcester out of the whole country. He had an opportunity to play in All-Star Game down in Florida, and then, based on his performance down there, was then invited back to be one of the top 60 13- and 14-year-olds in the country to compete. And I think that's an honor to recognize him, especially as a student in our Worcester Public Schools. And congratulations.
Thank you. Christopher, we have a certificate of recognition presented to Christopher for being selected among the 60 best 13- and 14-year-olds in the country to participate in the 16th Annual National All-American Youth Football East versus West All-Star Game. Signed by myself, superintendent of schools, and the Worcester School Committee. Welcome back.
(Inaudible)
All right. So we will take up two items that were in executive session. So pursuant to action taken in executive session, move to ratify a member random of agreement between Worcester School Committee and the NAIR116 cafeteria workers for a period of August 26, 2023, through August 25, 2026. Roll call.
Member Alvarez. Yes. Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Benenda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman. Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
In pursuant to action taken in executive session, move to ratify the member random of agreement between Worcester School Committee and the local 135 tradesmen, local 125 plumbers and steamfritters for the period of July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2026. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Benenda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman. Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Okay. So we'll move on to public comment. Anyone? Public comment? Is anyone on? No one's on. Good. All right. So we will now move on to the report of the superintendent. Alternative education programming review status update. Okay. So in regards to the held item, GB3-156.2 filed by Member Clancy to consider renaming the St. Casimir's to the Dr. Michael O'Neill Program at the alternative school. Superintendent Monares.
Yes, through the chair. After really digging into alternative programs and what would be appropriate for this presentation, tonight's presentation is going to focus on the alternative programs that are not for our neurodivergent youth or our children who are on active IEPs. So I'd like to hold this naming for the ROS that will come on April 4 for special education, and we would include it with that since this particular program is specific to students who have IEPs.
Okay. So motion to hold. Those that oppose, so ordered. Okay. So now we'll move on to the report.
Thank you. So tonight, I want to welcome the team, Ms. Asalosa, Mr. Tony, and newly, Dr. Conley. She has completed her doctoral program. It's been three weeks, I believe. So round of applause. Nothing like embarrassing her to present on our alternative programs. And where we are, we... Last school year, the Rennie Center reached out and offered to do an audit of our programs. And we took that opportunity to really take a look at what our programs are doing for our youth, what we can do in the future, and make some recommendations. Now, what you'll hear tonight is not just the recommendations from the Rennie Center, but also there were some asks that the committee had previously to bring back some data sets. So we're going to bring... We've got that included in here as well. Next slide. So as a reminder, every ROS plugs into the superintendent goals that were established by the committee and by which you'll be evaluating me. This one in particular is the third box over. Collaboratively lead school teams in identifying and using multiple sources of evidence to assess, respond, and improve outcomes for all youth. When we think about... And intentional focus, I'm sorry, on historically underserved youth. When we think about looking at our alternative programs, these are the students that would be considered what is called Tier 3 in educational terms. So Tier 1 is what we do for all students. And if we do it well, we execute it with high fidelity. And we work collaboratively with our educators using data to guide. Then 80% of our students should be... Would be successful. And then from there, Tier 2 is now what is additional support that the 15% more students would need. Generally, it's more time. It's smaller group settings. Alternative settings are for the students who are at the top tier, which should be 5% of our student demographic, our student population. So tonight, we are going to be looking at, what do we do for the children who have higher levels of needs? How do we support them? They're just as brilliant as the rest. The way that they learn or the space that they learn in needs to be meet their need. And that's what we need to be working on as we think about our alternative programs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the team, and they will lead you through this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Monares. My name is Annie Ezra-Luzon. I'm Chief Academic Support Officer. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present on the Worcester Alternative Schools' alternative programs. I have with me today our team, which is Mr. Thomas Tony. He's our administrative director for positive youth development. And Dr. Shannon Conley, our director of alternative education. And as Dr. Monares said, we are taking a deep dive into our alternative programs with a focus on the Rennie Center findings, as well as our response since those findings came out last summer. Mr. Tony will also share some referral supports that we have in place for our scholars that are really meant to help reshape their behavior in order to encourage responsible decision-making. So since Dr. Conley began with us last July, she has really hit the ground running and done a phenomenal job streamlining processes and really engaging with our educators in the alternative settings so that they have a voice in what this desired state of our alternative programs can look like, can feel like, taking into account the Rennie Center recommendations. And so, without further ado, I will turn over to Dr. Conley.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, through the chair. Keep the slides. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to highlight our alternative programs. Tonight, we're going to do an overview of the Rennie Center report, and then I'm going to give an update on our programs. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you. I really feel that a shared definition is important for our transparency and understanding. To that end, presented here is Desi's Description of Alternative Education. Our alternative education programs were established to be housed in standalone buildings rather than as programs within a larger comprehensive setting. This was purposeful in their design to best serve our at-risk middle school and high school students in Worcester who have experienced barriers to success in these traditional settings. Important to note, too, is that while our alternative programs may serve some students with disabilities, they are not designed to exclusively serve students with disabilities. Like all Worcester Public Schools students, our students in the alternative programs receive the state-level standards for academics. So last year, Rennie Center provided an audit of these various programs in our district. This evening, though, we are going to focus on the alternative programs for the Gerald Kramer Center and Challenge and Reach. And our public day school information will be given at a later time. Gerald Kramer Center is housed on Granite Street and has a rich history in the Worcester Public Schools of supporting our high school students who have experienced difficulties in the comprehensive setting. GCC, as we know it, offers both day and evening program to support students who are older high school students but under the age of 22. Oftentimes, they're behind in credits. They're returning to school, or they're not on track to graduate on time. Challenge and Reach is housed on Harlow Street and serves students in grades 7 through 10. And that program is to support the social, emotional, and behavioral development of students who are encountering the marginalization in their home schools. This program consists of two academies. Challenge is for our middle school students, and Reach is for our 9th and 10th grade high school students. The program is designed with a smaller instructional environment with a low teacher-to-student ratio and allows for more individualized attention, instruction, and support. Per previous request of the school committee, tonight, we're also going to review our referral support programs that are available as both Tier 2 and Tier 3 systems of support in our district. Next slide. So during the spring of 2023, the Rennie Center provided an audit of our settings. The objectives of the report were to identify the strengths in the programming, cite the areas of improvement, and to provide recommendations for the future. The strengths that were found were very robust in that our programs indicated areas of a strong foundation that we needed to continue to support and build upon. A key finding of the report was that there was a strength in the personal and school culture. Rennie Center found a culture of inclusion at the sites, and this contributed to the welcoming environment for all our alternative students. The staff at the sites are very passionate about their positions and very committed to their settings. There was evidence of strong relationships between the various stakeholders as well. Rennie Center also highlighted that these sites are often intimate learning environment. So there's an increase for our students to reengage. Importantly, there was an openness and willingness regarding a need to change. Next slide. Rennie Center also identified areas for improvement and growth. There was not a common mission for the Worcester Public Schools' alternative schools. Because of this, the line between special education and alternative education had become blurred in the Worcester Public Schools. This resulted in a need to further assure that the least restrictive environment for students in receiving their specialized instruction. Furthermore, there was not a common understanding of the basic practices and procedures around the alternative programs' referral processes. There was a lack of focus on academic instruction and discretion that Desi provides for alternative classrooms, and these opportunities were not being appropriately leveraged. At the middle school level in particular, there was some inconsistencies in disjointed continuum of care for the students. Perhaps the greatest challenge that Rennie Center found was the negative stigma of the programs and the students that they were serving. Next slide. Based on their findings, Rennie Center determined Worcester Public Schools' alternative programs were really at an inflection point. Worcester Public Schools had an opportunity to build on the human capital and passion that has existed historically in all our alternative programs. A prioritization needed to be made to develop a unified vision and mission of alternative education in Worcester as a district, but also for each of the programs. An effective referral process, criteria for student selection, and a re-entry process to comprehensive schools needed to be created. The alternative programs need to define and implement high-quality instruction for all their students. Next slide. To understand the context of alternative programs and academic support, it's important to examine the data of our students who have matriculated into our programs historically and now presently. As requested here, we have eight years of historical data and our current student enrollment. When looking at this data, I want to point out that our last school year in 2223 was our first full year of moving away from Sage and utilizing WUDEU as our student information system. As we experienced some nuances with data management, there were some inconsistencies in the methods of coding students. Therefore, specifically with Challenge and Reach, there was some inaccuracies with student enrollment so that those numbers are not certain. I also want to point out that this data is for total students who enrolled at the program during the course of a school year. So to clarify, these numbers don't mean that, for instance, in 2015, there was 320 students every single day at Gerald Kramer Center. It means that there was 320 students that were enrolled over the course of the school year. For our current school year, these enrollment numbers are accurate through the end of February. When quickly looking at it, it looks as though we have a sharp enrollment increase at Gerald Kramer Center and a dramatic decrease at Challenge and Reach. In order to understand why these numbers look this way, I want to provide some context. Next slide. Prior to this school year, both alternative programs only allowed each secondary school a specific number of allotted seats into their program. Gerald Kramer Center typically required students who also have earned 10 credits. So some high school students were referred over to Reach despite of their age. This year, based on the Rennie recommendations, the credit requirement was removed so that many of the high school students who are over the typical age of a sophomore, so 16-years-old, are now at GCC instead of being at Challenge and Reach like they were in the past. What this allowed for was the removal of the semester-based high school classes at Reach, which was really helpful to us. While the semester-based classes supports the needs of our older students, for those students who were age-appropriate and in their grade, this meant for some of our students at Reach, they were more rapid... at Reach, they were more rapidly receiving credits than they would have in their traditional setting. And this meant we had students who were bound to continue their school only through the alternative setting, and they could even have graduated ahead of time of their peers, their age-alike peers. Please remember, too, that GCC numbers include both day and evening programs, and new to this school year is that we now house the New City Center's Young Adult, NCCYA, is now housed at Gerald Kramer Center, Center as well. This provided these students a real opportunity to participate in GCC classes and potentially reach the graduation requirements. So despite the matriculation increase at Gerald Kramer Center, we still have, as of today, a class average size of thirteen students. And as for Challenge and Reach, important to note in that data, too, that over the years, this program also housed the Assessment and Stabilization Program, and at various times, this program included students from the fourth grade on up.
So through the chair, we also want to review our referral supports program that are available in the district. They are tiered systems of support that we deem tier-two and tier-three interventions. These referral supports have traditionally been an impactful way to support schools and students. Available for intermediate through high school students is our Safety Center programs. Safety Center was developed to support and educate students who had engaged in unsafe, threatening behaviors, and has been a longstanding three-day intervention in our district. We currently house an elementary safety center at Elm Park Community School, and in the past, secondary safety was housed at St. Casimir's, and currently is housed at the Fanning Building. Based on principal feedback this year, we've expanded the Safety Center to allow the principal to have more discretion on the behavior that warranted additional small-group setting intervention at the Safety Center. This allowed for administrator, it allowed for the administrator of the building to include concern of conflicts such as fighting, destruction of our school property, and other actions that pose a threat to the safety of the student, the school, or the school community as reasons to have a student attend the Safety Center. We also have the, the Turnaround Program. This program is aimed to curtail substance use. In the past, this program was housed at Central Mass Collaborative, and secondary, secondary students were sent to the program for five days. This program is now a two-day program housed at Forest Grove Middle School. The change allowed for one day a week for the teacher and SAC to visit elementary schools to provide talks on substance use and prevention, which principals were seeking support with, which allowed for more tier-one and tier-two supports in our schools. Lowering the number of days of required attendance was also a response to caregivers' feedback about the program and assisted in decreasing the time students were away from grade-level instruction and curriculum. As you look at the, these biographs, I'm sure you're noticing the decrease in students' attendance at these programs from the prior year. The need for administrators to utilize these programs in, is, is an indicator of the positive work, the Q Team, the School Culture and Climate Teams, the Deans, the Culture and Climate Assistants, and our wellness rooms. We are working hard as a district to offer systematic tiered intervention, intervention, supporting students in school settings and decreasing the time away from grade-level instruction and curriculum. Next slide. Another referral support we have for our students is our Assessment and Stabilization Program. We refer to it as ASP for our elementary and secondary students. The goal of ASP classrooms is to stabilize students exhibiting crisis due to elevated behavioral, elevated behavior or social and emotional presentation that interferes significantly with accessing the curriculum. ASP is designed as a short-term therapeutical classroom where students will undergo a comprehensive academic behavioral and social and emotional assessment. The program is designed for the student to attend thirty to forty-five or less days to complete a special education evaluation. This assessment will result in a stabilization plan that will support students' reentry into the appropriate least restrictive learning environment. Also, please note that ASP is not a special education placement. In the past, ASP has housed, was housed at Challenge and Reach, serving students ranging from grades four and above. This year, we made the decision to house ASP at Sullivan Middle, so that students in the Assessment Center had a greater opportunities to be in general, in a general comprehensive setting. ASP Elementary is housed at Goddard Elementary. The redesign of the Special Education Department quadrants, along with the Culture and Climate Coaches designated on quadrant teams, has allowed for a district to provide tier-three supports to our students and staff while the struggling student remains there, remains in their assigned schools. And now, we would like to welcome some speakers to share their experiences with alternative programs here in the Worcester Public Schools. We have Julie Lee and Joshua Lighton.
Hi, my name's Julie, and I'm a Gerald Kramer Center alumni. I'm extremely grateful for the Gerald Kramer Center. It not only provided me with small supportive outlet to finish my high school credits, but it also provided me with an administrative team who not only cared about my academics, but cared about me as an individual. Both Mr. Kramer and Mr. Juno took time out of their schedules on many occasions to educate me on how the choices I make will impact my future, and that I needed to choose myself first over people who did not have my best interests at heart. They supported me academically, provided guidance, as well as life advice. I can still hear Mr. Kramer saying, "You gotta get it together, chief. This isn't you. You're smarter than this." And even though I gave them quite a few reasons to, they refused to give up on me, which meant the world to an eighteen-year-old girl who had started to give up on herself. After leaving the Gerald Kramer Center, I went on to attend Quinsigamun Community College, where I made the Dean's List, and then I transferred to the University of Tampa. I've lived in four different states. I have traveled all over the world. I've earned two different bachelor's degrees, and I am currently a registered nurse, working on my master's degree at Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences to become a nurse practitioner. I have worked for Worcester Public Schools for the past three years as a registered nurse. I am fortunate enough to have built relationships with many of the students in my school, who now come to me for not only medical advice, but for guidance and life advice as well. Although they may test my patience at times, just like I did with the staff at the Gerald Kramer Center, the advice usually goes something like this. "You gotta get it together, chief. This isn't you. You're smarter than this." There's no doubt that I would not be who I am today or where I am today without the Gerald Kramer Center. I will always be extremely grateful for the impact the staff has had on my life. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you.
Hello. My name is Joshua Lion. I'm nineteen years old. I'm a student at Gerald Kramer Center. It's an honor. I'm really happy that I was chosen, out of all the students there, to speak in front of you all and represent my school that I'm so happy to be a part of. Just in the last week alone, the support I've got from the Kramer Center has been so huge. I got, I got a letter in the mail saying that I was one of the highest students on the English MCAS, and I don't think I'd be able to get there without the support of the Kramer Center. Even walking down the hallways this week, teachers are talking, teachers I don't even have first, in my class, they're telling me, "I'm really happy you're speaking for us. I'm so happy you're here." They're shaking my hand, they're telling me, "Remember, I'll be watching you, so make sure you're doing good." And, you know, it scared me at first because I didn't know where they were going to be watching me from. I didn't know that this was being broadcast without. And, but seriously, though, through the Kramer Center, I've been able to do things that all other Worcester students aren't able to do. I was able to represent my school at the Live to Lead Conference last year at Worcester. I was able to go to the Doherty Living Lab along with the other Worcester Public School students. I was able to do the Community Harvest Project. I was able to do early college classes. There was driving scholarships offered. There was tons more stuff that I'm just not even, I don't remember. The school itself, just because it's a smaller building, it has all the opportunities that all the other schools have, and that's what I really like about it, because it's smaller, it's more personalized, you get used to the building so fast. And I would know, because I came to Worcester at the end of last school year, and I was in North, and I was only there for about the last two weeks of that school. I showed up, I did my finals and left, and I didn't know anyone, no one knew me. I don't think anyone got my name down, not even the teachers, if I'm honest. And it was kind of bizarre to me, because I bet you other students thought it too, looking at me like you're used to students coming at the beginning of the year, not the end. No, and the teacher is probably even more perplexed that a kid just shows up, does his finals, and doesn't come back to your school letter for his next year. They probably tell urban legend stories about me, the kid who has no name in that seat right there. So a kid sat there, no one knows where he went, no one knows where he came from. They put pictures of me, I'm all blurry, like Bigfoot, and it's, and, but, I came from, I was in Webster beforehand. That's where I went to school for the most part, I was in Bartlett. And I knew everyone there, I was there since around second grade, and, you know, it was a very daunting feeling going to North, because it's this huge building, I don't know where I'm going. And then going to the Kramer Center, it just felt like a lot more streamlined. I knew, I knew my teachers' faces and names right away. I was shaking hands within the first week of the school. It was so simple to get used to it. And the, the bulk of it all was the credit recovery. I would have been spending another year in high school if it wasn't for the Kramer Center, and that's what I'm thankful for the most, because I've, I've stayed back before, that's why I'm a nineteen-year-old senior, but that was back in eighth grade, and I'm over that, and I think I've done well for myself in education since then. But it's not a good feeling to be held back at all, and I'm very grateful that the Kramer Center was able to prevent me and let me graduate on time. I don't have any real loyalty to North with it being my Worcester homeschool, but I know some students do have loyalty to Burnco or North or South. And another benefit of the Kramer Center is it doesn't sever your ties. You can still graduate at your homeschool, you can still attend its prom, you can still attend its events. So if, if a student really does feel disconnected from their school, they really don't have to be, because they still have those opportunities to show up to their school and see their friends. I didn't have any friends in North, I was only there for two weeks. But, you know, but, you know, looking at it from another student's perspective, the school is helpful for me, it's helpful for them, and what really, you know, helps that out a lot, too, is that you don't have to do, you don't have to go the extra mile in the sense where you don't have to do the extra, like, I didn't have to come here, I could have said no. You guys better cheer more than they did, we have to show them up. But if you, if you, if a student wants to show up and just do what they need to do to graduate, they are free to do that, because that's what the Kramer Center is all about. It gives you those credits you need, and I'm, I'm getting those credits any day, I'm doing extra stuff. But if a student doesn't have, doesn't want to do the extra stuff, they don't have to do it. They don't have to show up to things like this. They wouldn't have to show up to Live to Lead, they wouldn't have to go to the Liberty, Living Lab at Doherty. They wouldn't have to do any of that. They could do what they want to do, and they could get out. You can choose to do extra, you can choose to do the extra events that your homeschools do, you can choose to do the extra events that Kramer Center does, or you can choose to just sit and do what you need to do at the bare minimum, really, and then graduate. And the Kramer Center, that's what I think it offers a lot more than other schools don't. It has, this is just a smaller building, does not mean it has less options, and that's my favorite part about it. It's so personalized, but it feels like such, it's, it's, it's bigger than it seems. It's bigger than the sum of its parts. The teachers are so amazing. I love all my teachers, they all love me, they always say good things about me. And I'm really happy that I can be there speaking on their behalf, because the school, it means a lot to me, really, it does. And you do what you want, or do what you need to do, do what you want, there's a, there's a line between that, it's a spectrum, but it's up to you, it's up to the student to choose. And I'm very grateful that you all let me represent the school and represent those students. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, that's, well done, thank you.
Thanks, Josh, you did awesome. Cheers, we're all for you. Next slide, next slide. So what are our next steps? So what have we been doing since the report was received this summer? One critical element was that we've been bringing various stakeholder perspectives into our work with the alternative programs and referral supports. Prior to the school year, the district administration, school-based administration, staff at the various programs were given an opportunity to provide feedback on the programs and their needs. I met with caregivers who desired input on the changes, they wanted to see at the alternative settings that their students attended as well. Based on all the feedback, a shared guidebook in a Google Drive was created to outline the purpose of the programs. This also reestablished an entirely new referral system for both Challenge and Reach, and it updated the process at Gerald Kramer Center. We developed an alternative site council inclusive of staff members from the programs and their caregivers. The coordinators of the programs began working in an alternative network so that they could hone their best practices in leadership and develop ways to include the various stakeholders in moving their schools forward. Challenge and Reach began working on personalized learning plans and have been utilizing a system of monitoring students that incorporates not just their staff, but staff from the sending schools as well. Challenge and Reach also is utilizing a ten-week cycle in which they're having these meetings. Focused instructional coaches at, at the school are participating in professional development with all the other coaches. The Q Teams, Curriculum Liaisons, and Culture and Climate Teams have been working with our coaches and staff to develop an understanding of the various academic standards and use the strategies that really work for our at-risk students, not just academically, but emotionally as well. We have started a rough draft vision of alternative programming. The programs themselves are each working with their staff to develop their own vision. They've done a SWOT analysis to do this work. They're working on their personalized learning plans so that each program has that, and they're developing a vision that's very unique to their own setting. We've also taken the input of our administrators to adapt our referral programs and created the guidebooks as well. Through this work, we desire to next to complete the program guidebook. We want to ensure that all our students are always in the least restrictive environment, and we want to assure that they are getting equitable and high-quality learning experience, just like Josh was describing to us, in every alternative program. We plan to continue to use a cycle of improvement to continue to hone the referral processes and the entry processes. We want to implement and receive feedback on our learning plans that we're creating for our students, and we want to develop some partnerships, not just with caregivers, but with our community organizations, to provide our students with some unique learning opportunities in which we are actually actualizing the vision of the learner. We're going to continue to work with our district-level support teams so that we're being proactive rather than reactive to our student needs. And ultimately, it's our hope that we are, we will rebrand the alternative programs in Worcester Public Schools and become a model for the state of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Ma'am Superintendent?
So I want to thank the team, and I just want to put an exclamation point on a couple of themes that ran through this presentation. First and foremost, this idea of being preventative and offering early intervention. So we saw in some of the data points, the data has been dropping in some of these specialized referral programs because of the preventative work that the, the school teams have been putting in place and the district office has been supporting. And then when that's not enough, monitoring and intervening early enough so that children get what they need and they return back to their classrooms ready to learn grade-level standards. The other piece that I really want to put an exclamation point on is this idea of inclusionary learning opportunities for children. We heard from our two speakers, one who's an alum, one who is current student, and inclusionary practices, does that mean that everybody needs to get the same thing? Some children need different kinds of settings, and in those settings, they still need to be inclusionary, they still need to feel that there's a sense of belonging. People still need to think that they can achieve just like everybody else, and when people do that for them, and they believe in them, people meaning the adults in their lives, and any adult can do that for a child, children start to see them in themselves. We heard that with our, our nurse, who is quite a, quite a success story, right? And now she can give it back to others, and she's really paying it forward. Those are two really important themes when we think about our alternative programs. I want to close out by sharing just a quick story. When I first arrived in Worcester, I toured some of our programs in the community, it was summertime, and I didn't know all the different specialized programs we had, and I was actually at the Boys and Girls Club, and there was a young man there, and he was, I think they were doing some robotics type of work, and so of course, I asked him, "What school do you attend?" And he, and this was a middle schooler, he put his head down because he was embarrassed to tell me, and then he mumbled to me that he goes to Challenge and Reach. Now, I didn't know what that meant, but I could see the look on the child's face that he was not proud of where he was going to school. I'll never forget that, because a child should be proud of the school they attend. And, and if we really want every child to succeed in Worcester Public Schools, and I know we all do, then we want our children to be proud of where they go to school. And for some reason, he didn't feel that, and that's not okay. And if I ever come across that young man again, I'm going to remind him the brilliance that is in him, and that we see it in him, and we want it. him the brilliance that is in him, and that we see it in him, and we want him to see it in himself. So as a district, as a committee, when we think about alternative programs, we want to make sure that children are proud to be there. We want them to sound like the speaker that was here now. And if they're not, then we have to ask ourselves, are we really, have we met the need of that child? Or did we place them somewhere without figuring out what that need was? And if that's the case, then we need to work on that as well. So I want to thank the team. This is not an easy shift for Worcester Public Schools, for any district. But we will be the district that the state will be looking at as a model for alternative settings. And we will be continuing to practice preventative work first, then early intervention, and strong alternative settings for children when they need that. With that, I turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am Superintendent. Thank you for the report. Any questions, maybe? Member Benanda?
Actually, I know the alternative school very well, so I actually have twelve questions here. First of all, I do want to recognize that the Joe Kramer Center was started by Superintendent Dr. James Gobby. And it was Jerry Kramer that he brought to lead that, and with that guest speaker spoke. It was a very unique program for the Worcester Public Schools. And then when Mr. Kramer left, Mr. Whalen took over. And he followed in Mr. Kramer's footsteps. And it was successful for the many components that they put in there. So I think when we're looking at our alternative programs and you're talking about changing some things, it's really important to look at what were those components that did help make that success for that young woman that talked today. So in saying you want to be proud to be there, I think that we have to really look at a few concerns. One is adequately staffing the programs and providing opportunities. So the first question I have is, why did we move to two-hour classes for GCC Evening? The students that we have there struggled in their regular school with forty-five-minute classes. But I want you to answer those tonight, I'm just listing them for you. Second of all, I'd like to see the attendance of students at the alternative schools included for the next report. I'm wondering why students are sometimes moved after ten weeks, given the opportunity to go back to their high school. All our high schools are not on semester classes, it's very difficult after ten weeks to go back to your high school when you've been at, at, say, the Kramer Center. Also, I'm wondering about the location of the alternative high school. It's a very difficult location for students to get to. And also, there are no facilities for PE. They only receive PE one day a week, and there is absolutely no facilities for them to do that there. On the report for the alternative high school that we did receive from the state, it was very clear that vocational classes needed to be provided for students at the alternative high school. We did provide woodworking before we now moved to this location. There is nothing being provided for those students for vocational education. So what is the plan for that? Also, the students, some students that are long-term suspended, instead of going to Woodward Day, you can see, you show their numbers are extremely low, they have been allowed instead to choose to go to Challenge and Reach, GCC, or the alternative high school. I'm wondering why that is being offered for them. They should be at a different program, not these programs. Also, the alternative school, there's a program for students at the base, in the basement of the Fanning Building. So I'm wondering, is that the Safety Center program that you were talking about? Like, there is a group of kids that are down in the basement of the Safety Center, and I don't know what program that is. Next question is, the, there are some students who have had discipline issues being sent to the Worcester Alternative Program, which is a special ed program, and they don't have IEPs. So how are we doing that? How are we correcting that? Next issue is transportation. So we took on buses. We promised that we would offer many more things to the school district, and yet, the students going to the evening program at the Joe Kramer Center receive no transportation. And how, and I actually met a student, when I came up to City Hall to get something that was outside, saying they were coming from Great Brook Valley to the Kramer Center, and they just couldn't get there all the time. So that's an issue. Transportation is equity issue. All kids should be able to get to their place of schooling. On the Turn It Around program, staff have shared with me that they, the numbers have gone down because the waiting list was so long, and so they stopped sending them there. So what are we doing for the waiting list? Thank you. I'd like, I can write those questions down and send them to you, because I think they're really important if we want to really address the needs of the kids at the alternative school. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Ma'am Superintendent?
Yeah, through the chair, we actually can answer many of those questions. And in when, in your answers, would you please clarify? Because although we call the program at, the Worcester Alternative Program on, is that McKean, what's the road? McKean Road, that is actually only for children with special needs. And I think some of your questions were mixed in there for that. So when you're, if you can clarify that, tonight's presentation was not about that particular school. That was the one that, those were one of the two that we crossed out and said we were going to bring that back when we bring the special ed presentation back. Many of the other changes, if you can speak to that, it is to meet the needs of children. And if I can just also, as you answer, when we say success, I think it's really important that we talk about what makes a successful program. So we can talk about that on a different note, but if you can answer those questions, thank you.
Sure. So just to clarify, the ten weeks of students going back, that's at Challenge and Reach. And so Challenge and Reach, this year we changed, and we removed at the high school level that semester process. So those students are actually in full-year courses. So we're providing an opportunity for those students because they're young. Some of them can go as young as twelve years old in the seventh grade over there in ten weeks. They conduct a team meeting with the school members and the feeding school that sent them there to see the progress, to see if they're ready to go back, if they've stabilized. So we did change that. In the past, you, you would be correct, in the past, that was a high school component that was semesters, and that would have made it very next to impossible to do that. In regards to the Worcester Alternative Program, names and definitions are really important. And so what we experienced this year is that by the, by the state, Worcester Alternative is the official name of what we used to call St. Casimir's. So words get blurred, right? And so Worcester Alternative did, is a sub-separate program. It's a public day school, and that's not what we reported out on today. And that's where the woodworking was housed in the past. So that's the vocational component, but that was part of the public day. So that's why we aren't addressing that in this report.
So will you be addressing my question when you do the alternative high school program then? Because that's important to get addressed.
With the special education, yes. The location, we have experienced difficulties with the location. We have an improved, we feel an improved busing system. The large buses are going to the day program, and there is, it's falling under the same processes of all the other schools, the two-mile radius during the day. At the evening, we have a hub program. So the students are transported here to the hub. So they are taken from Granite Street, and they have the opportunity to use that busing. We go over that with the students who are choosing the, the evening program. Often, students who attend the evening program, you know, and currently, we have sixty-four students who are enrolled in that program. They are often, sorry, eighty-one, eighty-one students that are enrolled in that program right now. Those are often students who are working, they're much older, they tend to be closer to the twenty-two age, they're part of the returnee program. We changed the way that we did that. We are now offering those classes Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday evenings. And we moved to that two-hour opportunity because we're utilizing the flexibility that the state gives in alternative programs with that. So we, this way, we are allowing students to take their English and math courses, or they can take their history and science because each student is kind of unique in what they actually need, especially those evening programs. So that's why we moved to that model. That's reflective, too, of the more traditional college-looking model. Our, our, our goal, of course, is that we want our students to be future-ready, and many of our students, especially in the evening program, can be college-bound students, and that's what we hope for them, and we're catering to their needs. Turn it around, the waiting list is too long. We haven't experienced a waiting list this year, so I'm not sure what, where that came from, maybe in the past, but for this year, we have not had a waiting list. Oh, the Safety Center question about, is it housed at Harlow Street? Safety Center, we moved, we moved. So Safety Center in the past for secondary was housed actually at St. Casimir's, what we now call Worcester Alternative. When we moved, they, they, they also needed a place to move to. We made the decision to move Safety Center to the Fanning Building. So the Safety Center secondary is now, now housed at the Fanning Building. So there is only Challenge and Reach students at Harlow Street. In the past, at Harlow Street, there was the ASP program for potentially fourth graders on up to twelfth grade. We now house that as a middle school ASP program, and that's housed at Sullivan Middle. And again, that was a very purposeful move because those students are typically not special education students. That is not a special education environment. We want those students to have the experience in the greater population with all students. And Sullivan Middle is really an ideal place because of all the programs they house through special education and their very inclusive environment. As we all know, they house sixth grade through eighth grade of Goddard Scholars Academy and most of our restrictive programs that are still in the general population setting. Those are the ones I have written down.
Okay. Sure.
So I still don't.
Oh, oh.
Oh, through the chair.
I was recognizing that, the superintendent, then we'll go back to you.
Through the chair. Dr. Conley, can you give a little bit more explanation to the question that Member Benanda had regarding the semester credits and its impact on youth when they, and why we needed to move them to the Kramer Center? I think that there's a really important distinction, especially when it comes to when children were earning their diplomas.
Sure. And that was a dramatic shift for us in the alternative programs. In the past, if students began at Challenge and Reach, in the Reach section, so that's the ninth and tenth grade, some of those students were of age levels. So they were a traditionally-aged ninth grader. Because they were on semesters, the semesters were, are allowed through our alternative programming. We don't allow that in our other schools, in our comprehensive settings. We had a ninth grader that would be able to do two years of school in one year. So for a ninth grader who entered, when they left, they potentially were at, they were going to be entering the eleventh grade that next year. If they stayed another year, they then had almost all of their credits to reach twelfth grade if they were on track, leaving only the M pass. So then it became what, what becomes of these students. We couldn't have them go back to the comprehensive setting because what classes would they have taken? So the choice really became that they would go to Gerald Kramer Center. They were essentially forced into a situation where they would finish at the Gerald Kramer Center, and we had students that were graduating much before their age-alike peers. So there were times when we had sixteen-year-olds graduating roughly two years earlier. So if they had entered at their traditional age, they were able to graduate quite early. That was never one of our goals of our program. Our goal was always to help and support those at-risk students to credit recover. It wasn't to credit accelerate.
Okay. Member Benanda?
So my recollection is that they were not all on semester in Challenge and Reach. They were on semester at the Joe Kramer Center, but not all on semester at Challenge and Reach. There was an opportunity for kids that were older, that were in the ninth and tenth grade, but were older students, to do that. But they were, they were, in my recollection, that, that was not true. Also, the two-hour classes is still something I feel is not addressed. The kids that go to the GCC during the day have their classes five days a week, and they have forty-five-minute classes. And so the evening kids, you say, so that they can have two hours of classes, so that they can be prepared for college, they still were having difficulty with forty-five-minute classes. And we don't do that for our regular high school students who are going to college also. And then my concern is, when they have the two-hour classes and they need ESL classes, or they need another class, they're not able to get the four, the full number of hours that they need to graduate because those classes, they can't take because they're two hours in their other classes. So I, I just think we need to look at the two-hour classes. And I was actually told by somebody that it was financial. Because of the teacher contract and the hourly rate, it would be very expensive for the district to have it run five days a week, or four days a week. It, I believe it ran always four days a week, right? And we had Fridays off before. And that was why that change was made. So I hope that's not true. I think it needs to be looked at again. And I do think there's a shortage of staff in some areas at the alternative school right now, and I think we should address that. If indeed, we want to have all kids be successful, we have an obligation to make sure that it's staffed correctly.
Thank you, ma'am Superintendent.
Member Benanda, I have a clarifying question. Are you saying that the students who are attending the evening classes are not capable of doing a two-hour class?
Through the chair, I'm saying that it's very difficult for those students. It's very difficult for not GCC students to do two-hour classes. We don't, only two-hour classes we offer in this district are for AP students. We do not, and maybe some of the Volk students, but we don't offer two-hour courses.
Through the chair. I would actually say that children who need more time are the children who would be at a tier three, and they need more time with their classroom teachers to process information, to practice the language, to develop and do hands-on learning with their peers and with the teacher. My experience as a teacher of English language development, I taught two-hour courses with my children, and it benefited them. I'm not quite sure why we would think that a child who attends an alternative setting could not benefit from a two-hour setting. So I, I, I'm not quite sure what educational research we're using to determine that. But children are capable of what we put in front of them, and, and they will rise to that occasion. I think, Dr. Conley, you had something else to add to the, the statements?
Yes, through the chair. I think it's important to remember that the guidelines of the state of Massachusetts for alternative programming. So we have an availability to utilize flexible scheduling. We can adapt the curriculum to meet the needs of the students. So we have that ability in which, at the comprehensive schools, they don't have that gift. That's why alternative exists. So that's partially what we've done in this case.
Member Benanda?
Just through the chair. It also affects the flexibility of the schedule, however, when you have to have two-hour blocks. And again, you have students that are at the Joe Kramer Center that have to have L services. And therefore, they have to come out of that academic class, and they do, to receive that. So I'm just saying that's something to be looked at. You also have students that have special needs services, and it, it's very difficult with also the not, the right number of staff being hired to provide those needs for students.
Okay. Just want to, Member Millman?
Thank you, thank you for the report tonight. One that I've been waiting for. And, and I hear a lot of hope in the potential changes we can make to some of our programs to, to achieve the inclusionary practices that the superintendent is talking about. What I didn't see tonight, and I don't know, through the chair to the superintendent, if we talked about money. Like, what is the cost of all of these? There is a lot of programming in here. What, do we have some dollars? Do I need to make a motion for a report on dollars?
Through the chair. So on the presentation, I think it's slide, where do we have all the lists with, and we crossed it out? Slide five? I think it's slide five.
Yep.
Roughly, we, all of those, those programs put together, and then including our ACT program, which is a public day school for elementary students housed at the collaborative, but there are our youth, our staff. And, no, that's on that slide, huh? It is close to twelve million dollars.
Do we have any sense of budgeting for the Do we have any sense of budgeting for the coming year? I know there's all kinds of questions about that, but in terms of this work, trying to improve our delivery of services, how will that impact us?
We, through the chair, we are currently looking at, how do we ensure that we're meeting the needs of the children, providing alternative settings as we know that there are children who need that, and also practicing that preventative and early intervention in the comprehensive setting as much as possible with their grade-level peers, just like we're doing with the assessment centers, for example. You need to have children with their peers as you're assessing their need for, if they need specialized services, what they might need in language development, those type of things. So we are currently looking at that. Happy to bring back a breakdown of the programs, because we have been looking at them, for the committee, so that you can see as we move into this budgetary season. We're happy to do that for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to thank you. Dr. Conley, very comfortable you were in charge in this.
Thank you.
Remember Biancaria?
Thank you. Through the chair. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation. Both sites have a long history of supporting our students. And opportunities were built to enable our students to thrive. Students always have numerous issues to deal with, and both of these sites have worked on an individual basis to ensure that the kids have great opportunities. Couple of questions. World Language, I know, was a piece of what we look at when we have students graduate, and gym class. So are we providing those two areas to the night students, or is that not something that we provide to them, or have to provide to them at this time?
Through the chair, at this time, we do not offer physical education or world language class.
Is that a requirement for them to complete their graduation?
Some of them have completed that. Some students, there's a variety. There is a physical education requirement. World Language depends on the student. There's some variety in that being accomplished, whether or not they're ESL learners, et cetera.
So, so if they're not receiving, through the chair, if they're not receiving a gym class at these sites, how do we deal with that?
Through the chair. Sometimes some of these students come in with credits that have already been established, so they've already reached their physical education. We look at the needs of the students and have tried to adjust and adapt based on what they do need for the programming. It continues to be a fluctuation of what do kids need. And for the night students, typically, they do not need those credits, so those aren't the things that we offer for them.
Do we need four years of gym, or is it?
Through the, is it?
We do. We need four years.
For full credits?
Four years of.
I'll be honest, I, off the top of my head, I'm not sure if that's for full years or what amount of credits it actually equates to.
Because from what I understood, it was for four years for gym, but if we don't provide it, is there funding that is being looked at for the upcoming budget to provide that particular piece, or a teacher, fourth staff, that would be able to then give the students that opportunity if, if need be?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. If we, if we have children that are attending the night class and they need, in order to graduate, because that's the intent of it, right, to earn their diploma, if they need to have physical education, then we indeed would provide that for them. We would find a way to make that happen for that particular child. So we would not allow a class that they have to take that we aren't providing, not give them that opportunity to graduate. That is the intent of GCC.
Okay. And it always has been that, the intent. That's why I'm asking about the gym class, because actually, I have a friend who has a student there, and that was one of their concerns. So through the chair, what I would like to make is a motion that we look at what we can provide for funding that would then provide what is necessary for a gym class at Gerald Kramer for the evening.
Through, through the chair, we have made adaptations throughout this year to meet the needs of students. For, for instance, supporting special education students with additional hours for a special education teacher to be there. So those are things that we look at. Our coordinator, Mr. Moriarty, looks at what the needs are, and we've had the ability to adjust that as well.
Okay. So, Mr. Moriarty, through the chair, Mr. Moriarty would take care of what the gym class would be, or the actual?
He assesses what the credits are that students are lacking to make sure that we're, we're attempting to offer the most courses that we can in that evening program. It's important to remember, too, that evening students, they do go through a process of speaking and with the guidance counselors and the coordinator to assure that that's the best program for them. And we frequently urge students to stay in the day program before that we would have them go to the nights.
Before they go to the nights. I, I know that it, it's pretty much students that are in the night that are working, supporting their families. So I'm, I'm well aware of that because I worked with them for a number of years. So that generally is what occurs, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they have what is necessary to get a full diploma, and they end up with a certificate of attainment versus a diploma. So I'm just working towards getting the full diploma for them. Thank you for your presentation.
All set? Thank you. And I just want, we have our coordinators in the back there from the Challenge and Reach and the evening program. So thank you for the work that you do, and Dr. Conley, again, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your expertise in making our children better here in the Worcester Public Schools. Okay. Uh, she can answer the question for you? So Diane Biancaria's motion. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. Okay. Okay, we are moving on now to report to the standing committee, teaching, learning, and student success.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Standing Committee on Teaching, Learning, and Student Success met on February 26, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Present was, Vice Chair Vanessa Alvarez, Members who Mailman and myself, along with Assistant Superintendent Dr. Marie Morse and her colleagues, who she introduced. We had four items that we had to take up. First item was GB 2-218.1, to accept the Early College Full School and Expansion Year Two Fund Code 175 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, continuation administered by the Office of Early College in the amount of $500,000. Mr. St. Louis, Director of Early College, presented the Early College information to the Standing Committee. He noted that the grant received for the current year for a program housed at Claremont Academy called Wall-to-Wall Early College, which is similar but separate from the traditional early college programs. The goal of Wall-to-Wall is to serve 100% of the school's population. Through the grant, Claremont has hired a full-time early college coach and counselor. Before the grant, only 4% of the Claremont students were involved in early college. However, with this grant, Claremont has worked innovatively to enable students who otherwise could not attend off-site classes at local college partners to participate with 10 early college courses being offered right at Claremont during the school day, and now participation is up to 31%. Freshmen and middle school students are also allowed to attend College Readiness Program activities, Three Week College and Career Summer Camp at Quincyman Community College and Worcester State University, visiting campuses, and even staying overnight in the dorms. Member Mailman asked for clarification on how many classes are being held at QCC and Worcester State University. Mr. St. Louis noted that QCC has 13, Worcester State has seven, and there are 10 classes happening inside Claremont with college professors and adjunct professors teaching those classes. The motion was made to, to approve and file the item. On roll call, the motion passed 3-0. The second item we took up was GB 2-292.3, Requesting Administration Explore Offering Driver's Ed Utilizing Local Driving Schools at the High School Level. Dr. Morse introduced Dr. Kusonis, uh, Mr. Kusonis, Director of College and Career Readiness, to speak on the driver's education. Mr. Kusonis explained that after an audit of the program offerings, it was noted that there were some barriers to students' access to driver's education and transportation. It is the main barrier for students not able to get the programs, internships, and jobs, especially as it's cost prohibitive. Director Kusonis added that Emily Lehman, for the Innovation and Career Pathways Program, reached out and received funding from the American Rescue Plan, also known as ARPA, for 100 students to receive $775 scholarship for driver's education through AAA. Students would be responsible for the additional $259 for the class. That includes road tests. WPS will offer five sessions over the course of the next year, beginning in April vacation and continuing through the fall. Director Kusonis explained the application and lottery system associated with the program acceptance. The goal, he noted, was to give opportunities to our students that are in innovation career pathways, and then all the career vocational, technical, and chapter 74 programs. On a motion to approve and file, roll call 3-0, motion passed. Our third item was GB 2-5.56.5, Requesting the Administration Provide an Update on Library Programs and the Use of Libraries Throughout the District. Dr. Morse noted that the last update of the Worcester Public Schools/Worcester Public Library collaboration was on June 8 of 2023. Dr. Morse told the committee that Worcester Public Schools and Worcester Public Library are working on a closer relationship, and noted that we've been working on updates to the relationship for our students. She introduced Dr. Colleen, Dr. Colleen Kelly from Worcester Public Schools and Director James, Jason Homer from Worcester Public Library to speak on the topic. Dr. Kelly reiterated that there has been a fantastic revitalization of the Worcester Public Schools' relationship with the Worcester Public Library in an effort to align curriculum. Grade 7, 8, 9, and 10 will have the same summer reading assignments, along with access to subscription-based database for the readings. These common readings will be the basis for the first five, six weeks of the Fall English Language Arts, also known as ELA courses. Additionally, she noted that Worcester Public Library will be supplying library cards to all Worcester Public students and book vending machines in remote locations with 300 to 400 titles, such as at the YMCA. Director Homer also discussed some of the future innovations with Worcester Public Schools, including an institutional library card that will allow Worcester Public School teachers to borrow books without personal liability or loss or damaged books. Jody DeShamtonelli of Worcester made a public comment. She thanked the Worcester Public Schools for continuing the program and collaboration. She noted that the high schools were having libraries, and elementary schools not having them is inequitable, and urged Worcester Public Schools to bring librarians back. She thanked the presentation. Member Mailman requested that this item be brought back in six months for additional update. On, on that motion, roll call, the motion passed 3-0 to have an update in six months. And the final item we had was GB 3-253.1, to provide an update on school committee about the Doherty Biomedical Academy Program. Dr. Morse introduced Principal Staley from Doherty Memorial High School to speak on the Doherty Memorial High School Biomedical Academy Program. Principal Staley described the program to the committee, and is scheduled to begin in the fall of 2025. It will be similar to the program by Goddard and Hanover Academies, and allow students to participate in coursework for college credit and have opportunity for fieldwork, internships, and field trips. He noted there will be some fees involved in the program for participation, lab fees, and consumables, but this will be budgeted for. Staff will have access to meaningful curriculum, training, and professional development. He then noted a timeline to the committee, and also explained the basics of admission. On this, there was two motions made by Member Mailman. The first was to hold the item with an update for future meeting. On that vote, with 3-0 passed to hold the item. The second motion was to have the administration supply a schedule of fees for all chapter 74 and non-chapter 74 programs. On roll call, that also passed 3-0. And that was the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
All set? All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next up is Finance, Operations, and Governance, met March 4, 2024.
Thank you. So at the meeting on March 4, the meeting was called to order at 4:45 PM. Present were Vice Chair Biancaria, Member Johnson, Member Roy, myself, Deputy Superintendent Brian Allen, and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Marie Morse. The first item was GB 3-198, to explore the utilization of student employees ages 16 up for summer custodial needs and any other departments that could benefit from additional seasonal help. Administration would like to come back to us with additional information on this item, so the motion to hold was approved 4 to 0. The next item was GB 2-24, to consider what observances are recognized by the Worcester Public Schools and to approve the next three school years of school calendars. And these were taken collectively with Items 3-198.1 and C&amp;P 3-8, and so we were voting on all of those collectively. Mr. Allen noted that the current calendar was approved for only a one-year calendar, so that the administration could go back through and develop three years' worth of calendars. We are now referring to the October 14 holiday, the October 14th this year, as both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Other than this, the format of the calendars remain virtually unchanged. I noted that some of the additional changes and part of the planning process were due to additional professional development days, as well as the consideration of holding those on election days, and asked that we additionally add the incoming day for kindergarten and pre-K open house to the calendars per a community request. Dr. Morse noted that although it has not been done in the past, they are happy to add it to the calendars, and that it is held on the first Wednesday in June. This year, it will be on June 5, and there is no school for pre-K in kindergartners on this day, as they, the open houses, and that is added to the calendar. So on a motion to add the aforementioned open house day to the upcoming calendars, as well as to approve 24, 25, 25, 26, and 26, 27, Member Biancaria thanked administration for keeping October 14 listed as both the Indigenous Peoples' Day, but as Columbus Day as well on the calendar. Member Roy stated that it was a great idea to open the, add the open house day to the school year calendars. On a roll call of 4 to 0, the motion was approved. The final item was finance item from October, to accept a donation in the amount of $350,000 from the Haas Foundation to Worcester Technical High School and Skyline Technical Fund for facility improvements and equipment purchases for the advanced manufacturing program in exchange for signage and 15-year naming rights of the space within the school as the Gene Haas Center for Advanced Manufacturing. I introduced the item and noted this item had been removed from the agenda at the time due to some questions from committee members around the background of the organization that was donating the funds. And at this time, it was a recommendation of the administration to file this item. Mr. Allen spoke to the item, informing the committee that the Haas Foundation has paused on the donation at this time, but said that they may come back to us in the future, once they have additional information for the committee. Member Biancaria asked Mr. Allen to confirm that the school was in fact not receiving this donation, which he confirmed, reiterating the reasons why, and explained that additional funding was provided for the needs of Worcester Technical High School to address much of what this grant was going towards. And Member Biancaria noted that she believes it is unfortunate that we are not receiving this donation as we are trying to build that manufacturing education. And Mr. Allen did note that it should be, or maybe about several months before we do receive the information that had been required of the Haas Foundation. So we moved forward with a vote to file, and it was passed 4 to 0, and the meeting adjourned.
All set? All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. We got approval of the grants and finance items. If anybody has any questions, we can take them collectively on a roll call. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. O 4-14, Requesting Administration Provide an Update on the Safety Centers for Elementary and Secondary, Including the Criteria for Entry. Number of students referred to last year to this year. Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Through the chair, before this item is filed, is it possible to receive perhaps a written summary of the criteria for entry?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. We're happy to bring that back. We can bring that back for you for the next committee meeting. So we'll go ahead and hold this.
So if we can hold this, and then we'll get that information for the criteria. Thank you.
Hold it on the roll call. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. We have, to request a report on a number of hearings for discipline policy violations, a number of students placed on alternative settings.
and a number of students placed on alternative settings. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, initially, we thought we would include this information in the ROS tonight as we prepared it. It didn't make sense to put it there. I'm going to ask that we hold it. We'll bring it back when we present on climate and culture, which is scheduled for April 18.
Are they fine? Okay. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. 4-29, to approve an easement to Crown Castle Fiber LLC for the real property located on the Westley portion of Harrington Way, also known as 150 Harrington Way North High School. We can do a motion to approve if everybody's fine with that. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Next up is to work with the administration in the Doherty High School community to work on naming the space a new school after former firefighter Lieutenant Jason J. Minard. Minard is a Doherty alum, met his wife Tina while they were both students at the school. Tina took his firefighter exam at the current building. Member McCullough?
Thank you. And I just ask, in the discussions coming up, as we get closer towards the new Doherty High School being finished, that this is something that administration explores with the Doherty High community to name something appropriately for Jay. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll send that to Finance and Operations. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next time up is to authorize administration to submit statements of interest to Massachusetts Building Authority for Burnco Middle School for a major renovation or replacement. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is to consider approval or propose new courses and course name changes. We also have that. Member McCullough, followed by Member Mailman?
Thank you. My statement was just going to be that this should go to teaching, learning, and student success. That's the process for new courses and course names first.
Okay. Member Mailman?
That was kind of my question, but I wanted to ask administration through the chair if that, does that jam us in any way? So I feel like some of these classes did come before us, which was the World Cultures and Languages. We had talked about, I remember several of these. The ones I didn't recall seeing in teaching and learning was the new chapter 74 programs. And then, so maybe we can, is that?
Dr. Morse?
Through the chair, thank you. So I appreciate the grace you'll give us. We did bring these courses to you late, and we're already in scheduling season. So that is why we had to go through the main agenda, so we apologize for that. The discussion around the courses, you are correct, many of them already up and running. But with our new Woo ECU system for scheduling, we'd like to be able to offer these courses to our students.
Can I ask a couple of other questions? There is a, what is it called? Sky and the Planets, I can't get the name of it, but it's somewhere in the astronomy. That class, Portuguese, are these classes that will be offered at every school?
These are not courses that will be offered at every school, but they'll be available to all schools at some point when they're in the course catalog. So the plan for each one of those courses is not for all, they're particular asks of specific schools.
So it would be great to have that information about which school is asking for these. So if they're not available, I think the, again, World Cultures and Languages is going to be every elementary school, I presume. I'd like to know about astronomy, I'd like to know about Portuguese. And then on the chapter 74s, it seems like every one of these is for Doherty.
That's correct.
And the other question I had is the Principles of Biomedical Science. Isn't that the program that we are going to be studying through next year?
That's correct.
Why do they have to be in the book now? Couldn't they go to teaching?
We have a, sorry, I don't mean to jump to the end. So we have a one-year pilot that we're working through to provide for students. So there's a one section, it'll be an enrichment course. But it isn't the whole build-out that we're talking about for the following year.
Say that again. So we're going to have one class in this biomedical science program at Doherty?
There'll be a course at Doherty, one course that students can select, biomedical course that will be our practice and our tryout really for the following year as we build up the entire program.
So who gets to take that class? Because one of my big concerns with this program is the whole, you know, who's, how are we?
So through the chair, at this point, any student that wants to take this class, it will be allowed to take it.
Okay.
Depending, I'm sorry, depending upon the grade.
Is it four years' worth of curriculum? So they'll?
It will be, but it won't be for next year. Next year is just a one enrichment course that we are using as a test.
Per year, per grade level?
Not at this point, no, not at every grade level.
Okay. And then AP African Studies, do you know where that's going?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
AP African-American Studies.
I do not have the details of the school that it's going to be provided at. Our goal was to have that provided at every school. That is what our aim is. So I don't have the details on which particular school that is going to be provided for next year.
But those are, those details are available?
Of course, but I don't have them with me tonight.
That's cool. So can I just make a motion that we get that additional information? Thank you.
Member McCullough?
Thank you. So to go back about going to teaching, learning, and student success, I'm fine with approving these tonight, but that they, if they still go to teaching, learning, and student success, so then they can have the full conversations to some of the points that Member Mailman brought up, and that way there can be full conversation.
So Member, to, Member Benanda?
I just wanted to ask, because Member Mailman brought that up, don't we still allow students in the high school, if it fits in their schedule, to take a course at another high school if they can get there? So I know when I was at South, Claremont students, if it was an AP course, they wanted to get involved. Like that AP course is a new course now from College Board. The African-American History is a new course. And usually, we allowed students, if it wasn't offered in their school and they had their transportation, because usually those are classes juniors and seniors take, if there was room and it fit in their schedule to take those courses, are we still allowing that?
Dr. Morse?
So through the chair, I think so. But I don't want to answer affirmatively until I can check again, but that makes some sense. So if we can do it, we would absolutely do that.
Member Biancaria?
Yes. I'm glad to see this expansion of the chapter 74 courses at Doherty. With that comes a number of specifics. Have they all been detailed to then have these courses? If we approve them, we have accommodations for all these courses.
So through the chair, there's been a tremendous amount of work from the Doherty team regarding these courses. They've been building them up for several years. So John Staley, the principal of Doherty, came and presented some information at TLSS, and I can get the backup that he provided to the committee if that would be something people would be interested in seeing and looking at.
The backup for that would certainly be an advantage to us at the committee meeting, not necessarily on the floor here, but when we have our standing committee meeting, I certainly would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion to approve the item and send it to committee and to, and also Member Mailman's motion. Take those collectively. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. Next up is to request administration provide the cost of hiring all cultural and climate specialists, the number in each school, and the training provided. Member Benanda? I said Member Benanda.
I couldn't hear you. I'm interested in this information, because I know when there was discussing the fight that occurred at Worcester Tech with the assistant principal being hurt, it was brought up that they were going to add another culture and climate specialist. And it was also said that then the assistant principal with them involved in their building would have to break up fights. So when I read that, I was wondering how many are there, culture and climate, what schools they're at, which is a funding issue. And, but I'm really interested in what training all of them have. Because if they're breaking up fights, they should have CPI training, they should have restraint training. So I would be interested in getting a report on how many there are, what schools, and what training they've received. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, we're happy to bring that report back to you. Member Benanda, just point of clarification, at Worcester Tech, all of our larger high schools were funded with the previous, with school budget 2024 for three, climate and culture. They had not hired all three. It is my understanding now that they finally have all three. But at that time, they had not. So we didn't provide an additional one, they needed to fill a vacancy. But we're happy to bring that information back.
Okay, to the administration, all those in favor, opposed, so ordered. That brings us to the end of the meeting. So hope to see everybody in a beautiful sunny day on Sunday, even those people in the back over there. And so we'll see you on Sunday afternoon at the Irish Parade, the St. Patrick's State Parade Committee will be very grateful. Soon Mailman will be leading the way. We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered.